Okay. If everybody's ready, we'll begin. I'd like to begin this special meeting of the Hoyouk City Council, call it to order, and ask that the city clerk please call the roll and record those members present.
Bartley? Presnahan?
Here.
Greeney?
Here.
Jordane?
Here.
Leahy?
Present.
LeBron Martinez?
Here.
Lisi?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Roman?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Tommen?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Valentin?
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America. And the city of Hoyouk.
And the city council.
I'm gonna read a communication that comes from myself as council president. Dear Mrs. McGee, please be advised that a special meeting of the Hoyouk City Council will be held on April 25th, 2016, at 7:30 PM in the city council chambers. The agenda will include, first, the election of city auditor; second, we will have a public comment period for those candidates seeking to fill the vacancy for city council at large; and then, thirdly, we will have a series of finance committee reports, some of which absolutely required our immediate attention this evening; and then, fourth, is an item from the DGNR committee related to a bet and breakfast to be located at 1109 White Street, and we'll have some more information on that at that time. Without further ado, we can go to the election of city auditor. If you'll recall, councilors, at our last meeting, I believe we went about four or five ballots, no candidate was able to achieve a majority vote. As you do know, it requires eight votes to be elected to fill this position. A motion would be in order to go to the first ballot.
Second?
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to go to the first ballot. I'm just gonna briefly go through the rules once again. Each councillor, when your name is called, we will vote alphabetically, you please state the name of your candidate. The first person to achieve eight votes shall be elected. Okay. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Harry Chadwick.
Presnahan?
Carolyn Davis.
Greeney?
Harry Chadwick.
Jordane?
Chadwick.
Leahy?
Mrs. Carolyn Thomas Davis.
LeBron Martinez?
Carolyn Davis.
Lisi?
Carolyn Thomas Davis.
McGee? McGivern?
Harry Chadwick.
Roman?
Carolyn Thomas Davis.
Sullivan?
Harry Chadwick.
Tommen?
Harry Chadwick.
Bacon?
Harry Chadwick.
Valentin?
Carolyn Thomas Davis.
Harry Chadwick, eight votes. Carolyn Davis, six votes.
Okay, very good. By your vote, you have elected Harry Chadwick as the new city auditor of the city of Hoyouk. And I remind councilors that he, this position serves an indefinite term. There's no specific term of years, unlike the tax collector position, which fills out the remainder of Mr. Guzman's term, and then, at that point, would be a three-year term. So, I see Mr. Chadwick's in the room, sitting over in the front row. Congratulations, Harry Chadwick. All right, taking care of item number one.
Motion to suspend the necessary rules.
Okay. Okay, motion to suspend the necessary rules regarding...
Proceeding out of order to the finance committee reports.
Okay, so you want to save item two for a bet and do finance first?
Yeah, it just seems there's some folks here that are here for the specific transfers, so instead of making them wait past all the interviews.
It's fine with me, that sounds good. Counselor McGee, you're in support of that?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a motion to take them up as a package, unless you want to go through each and I can explain them all, but normally, since they're all gonna be... however you guys want to do it.
My preference would be that we didn't necessarily, because I don't know if people are prepared to vote yes on all 11 items.
Okay, so one at a time.
Yeah, maybe after the description, we can consider that as an option. So, motion on the floor currently is to suspend the rules to now go to items three, which is the finance committee reports, and we'll come back to item two.
It's four.
Item four, item four.
Oh, on my agenda, it's item three, finance committee reports.
No one, new agenda.
Oh, okay.
That's just the letter, this is like the formality of the agenda.
Oh, okay, very good. Oh, no wonder, it says ordinance committee reports, okay. Previously, all right, to skip ahead to what is now marked on the new agenda, item four, finance committee reports, and we'll come back to item two. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Beginning with item number 4A, let me read that, thank you. "The Committee on Finance, to whom was referred a financial transfer in the amount of $50,000 from general fund free cash to special counsel, have considered the same. Recommend that the order be adopted." Counselors McGee, Tommen, Leahy, Bacon. This is related to the law department, I believe.
Yep, make a motion, receive, adopt, pass, first reading.
Good, motion's been made, seconded to receive and adopt, and passed the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Yeah, as we all know, when Kara came in and we took money from, what we're supposed to is hire an attorney, a new attorney for the office for the real estate transactions, they never hired anyone, so they took the money from that, filled in for outside legal counsel. Kara said at the time, she still projected a shortfall, so this is the shortfall of another $50,000 to get her towards the end of the fiscal year for outside counsel fees.
So, how come the salary line wasn't overfunded, then? And then, shouldn't it be coming from salary to this, as opposed to free cash?
No, just a reminder, we took it from salary the last time, so we took that money already and put it in special counsel. And she said she would come back, which she did. Now, it's coming from free cash, because there's nowhere else to go.
And what cases are related to this?
She gave us a laundry list of cases, as usual, and gave us a breakdown of all the litigation, so that was at the committee. Would you like a copy of it?
That'd be nice, yeah, I'll put it with the jacket. Any questions? Under discussion, councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President, just as a point of information to the chair, how much free cash will be remaining if all of these are passed tonight?
Good question. If everything is passed tonight, and not discussing the bond stuff, this is just free cash, we were down to about $88,000, but the $50,000, the new request for outside legal counsel, would be 88 minus 50, so you're down to $38,000, give or take.
Until June 30th. Let us all keep that in mind.
Any other discussion? All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Pass the second reading.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded, seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of granting the financial transfer, a no vote is to deny it.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
No.
Greeney?
Oh.
Twelve a's and two nays.
By your vote, you've approved the financial transfer. Item number 4B. Item number 4B is a report from the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred a financial transfer in the amount of $64,463 from demolition to pay property and maintenance demo supervisor and pay property and maintenance demo worker. Recommend that the order be adopted. Counselors McGee, Tommen, Leahy, and Bacon.
Make a motion, receive and adopt, pass first reading.
Second.
It's been made, seconded to receive and adopt, and passed the first reading. Under discussion, the chairman, Counselor McGee.
Yeah, what this represents, it's a taking from the demo line and putting it over into trying to hire a supervisor and then, maintenance workers, in the sense of dealing with demo of the unsafe buildings that we have. The number that we have for us will be changed a bit, in the sense that we're not gonna need the $64,000, because we're getting towards the end of the year. By the time it's advertised, and they go out and they're really gonna start with the supervisor first, you're not gonna need the total amount, so most of it go back into free cash. So, really, the intent is to hire a demo supervisor and maybe one or two demo workers, in order to then go in and attack our buildings, in order how to take them down. I can't not give credit to Mr. Sullivan, Counselor Sullivan over here, who gave a very detailed analysis as to how this works and the cost savings that could be achieved towards the city, as well as how to address these buildings quicker than what we normally are, which is put some money towards it, take a building down, it costs $100,000, $200,000. So, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Sullivan, who is working with Mr. Cody, to try and get this up and running, and he is a wealth of knowledge when it comes to this type of expertise, so I'll defer over to him.
Counselor Sullivan, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Just to give it to everybody in a nutshell, because I know we've been through on an individual basis, also with a lot of my colleagues here. The amount, by having two people that can do this kind of work, they're not physically going in and tearing a building down themselves, but they're able to go in there, secure the buildings, first of all, start getting proactive as far as preventing the deterioration of some of them. On other ones, they'd be able to farm some of the work out, supervise that work, reduce the cost to the city, making the available funds that we do have more productive. You know, you can throw a lot of numbers out there, but my estimate, you'd get five times as much work done doing it in this manner, as to what we're doing now, putting it out for public bid, and maybe doing one or two demos a year. The other thing, just in the last couple of days, if the problems we have aren't urgent enough now, I just saw that the citizens, for the community development block grant, the Citizens Advisory Committee had recommended $175,000 for demolition. The development, DGGR Committee had upped it to $230,000, $234,000, the full city council had gone with $234,000. At the same time, there was a small park that was proposed, which all three bodies had voted zero for. The mayor has zeroed out the demolition budget out of the community development block grant, and put it all towards that park. So, I hope you're all aware of this, there's now no problem with deteriorating buildings in Hoyouk. And we need another pedestrian plaza for our parks and recreation department to maintain at taxpayer expense.
Any further discussion? Counselor McGivern.
Although I agree with the concept, understand the economics, and commend Counselor Sullivan for the proposal, you know, at this time, I don't think it's the correct way to spend what little free cash we have. We've asked the mayor for a hiring freeze, we've asked the mayor to show us that it's not budget cuts that are gonna stabilize the budget, it's reduction of personnel, and certainly, when there is something being newly proposed, as good as it is, at this point in time, I will not support it, and maybe take a relook at it July 1st.
Any other discussion, Counselor McGee?
I'll wait unless someone has a question.
Okay, Counselor Sullivan?
I don't believe it's free cash, I think this is money that was already in the budget for demolition. If we take this money that would be spent on a demolition, you'd get one demolition out of it. If we hire these people, you'll be able to oversee 10 demolitions.
That's correct, it's not coming from free cash. It's coming from the demo line. Counselor McGee?
And just on that point, we did bring that up in finance, in the sense of requesting the hiring freeze, which has not happened. In this, yes, it is adding to the role, which, as we all voted not to do, but if you look at the overall expenditures and the issues with the city having the building problems that we have, to take on this task, and overall, I mean, you don't have numbers before you, but we did have a list of all the properties that we do own now, you know, this can become a cost savings mechanism in order to address the problem, of which, when talking with Damian in the meeting, he said, "Look, if we don't need these people," you know, "you would have to address," in a sense of letting them go and that type of stuff, so he understood the ramifications to it and the budget problems, but the overall view is, you know, just throwing money at the buildings and tearing them down is one thing, taking this approach will have a whole other effect in cost savings towards it. So, both sides are correct, in the sense of hiring freezes and this, I voted for the hiring freeze, I actually filed the order, but when it comes to the buildings and the way they are in Hoyouk, we have to do something proactive to address the problem, and this is one way to try it.
Counselor Greeney?
Yeah, is this position a contractual position? If it is, what are the contractual obligations for the city?
No, it's proposed to become a city employee position.
But the individual would still be under contract, I would assume, for the city, which would include benefits for all the hires and all the employees and everything.
They would get regular municipal employee benefits. I saw a hand up over here, Counselor Bacon.
And I would note that the discussion in committee also included that we would be reviewing this in the context of the full budget, because we didn't have the benefit of that, and so, we'll all be able to make separate decisions, once we do have the ability to look at the entire budget.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, so, Mr. President, and I really want to compliment, just like Todd did, Mike's work in this area, and I genuinely defer to Mike on most of this, I just think at this late stage of the fiscal year, plus with the mayoral decision, it's his call on CDBG, I, while I strongly oppose what he did, as I pointed out that night, Mr. President, the numerous hours that we put in, that Counselor Sullivan put in, above and beyond, how I pointed out that we have three parks within about a two-minute walk from Lyman Terrace, one to the west, one to the north, one to the south, and now, his honor is gonna put in a plan for yet another park to the, across the street, across John Street, where the Bud was. So, I want the public to be clear in that, $195,000, Counsel Sullivan?
$175,000.
Thank you for further, thank you. So, $175,000 from CDBG funds that we spent hours on, going over the minutia, we put most of that into demolition, $234,000. Meanwhile, when this body takes its time to make some decisions, the rhetoric coming out of Room One is embarrassing, because he comes down on this body, saying, "You guys and gals are to blame for all these buildings going down," and yet, we go ahead and put the money in the CDBG money, free money we get from the federal government, by the way, for demolition. What does he do? Zeros it out and puts it into yet another public park. So, while I happen to support Lyman Terrace, you know, I may not be in the majority of this body, I support that ongoing concern, I think they're pretty well covered as far as parks go, Mr. President. I don't think they need a fourth one surrounding the property, and I really oppose what the mayor did in this case. So, concluding my point, that shows me that the mayor is not taking demolition seriously. The rhetoric aside, Mr. President, he doesn't take it seriously, so the next one's on him. I am not going to, I'm not gonna support this order tonight, I'm just gonna wait for the budget to come for FY 17, and Counselor Sullivan, I will look at it then very seriously, and again, I 100% respect your opinion, but at this point, I can't support it, thank you.
Any other discussion? Anybody else? Okay. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made, it's seconded to pass the second reading. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of approving the transfer of $64,463 from the demolition line to the creation of these two positions, a no vote is to deny it.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
Yes.
Bartley?
No.
Presnahan?
No.
Greeney?
No.
Ten a's and four nays.
By your vote, you have approved the transfer. Item 4C. Item 4C is a report from the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred a financial transfer, in the amount of $7,630 from professional services to paid director of Wisteriahurst. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted. Counselors McGee, Tommen, Leahy, and Bacon.
Motion, receive, adopt, pass first reading.
Second.
It's been made, it's seconded to receive the committee report, to adopt it, and to pass its first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Yes, Katie Preisler, hopefully I'm saying that right, she's the director at Wisteriahurst. When she was hired, they put in the budget incorrectly, her salary, so they're taking from this line item to put over there to pair what she was contracted for, so it's a budget error.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President?
Counsel Valentin?
Just for the record, I've consulted with our law department, I'm on the board of directors of Wisteriahurst, just wanted to make sure it wasn't a conflict for me to vote, and it's not, so, just for the record, it's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of, oh, Counsel Greeney?
Just quickly, what's, is this the full salary for that position?
No, it's adding to the full salary.
Adding to the full salary, I believe they're stating that they underappropriated for... Adding to the full salary, I believe they're stating that they underappropriated for that line for the year, and that they're adding the $7,630 to make it whole.
So, this, the contractual salary for this position is what? Do you have any idea?
Fifty-seven, I think it was 57,630 roughly, and they're budgeted under that.
And the line item was $7,000 short?
Yes, that's what they're claiming. Counsel Bacon?
Just in committee, that question was asked, and she provided us with information that she had been hired at that rate. That was higher than what was in the budget.
Okay, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Pass the second reading?
Second.
It's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor of granting the transfer, a no vote is to deny it.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the transfer of $7,630 for Wisteriahurst. Item marked 4D, Committee on Finance to whom was referred a financial transfer in amount of $3,500 from contracted services to overtime, have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted, Counselors McGee, Tallman, Leahy, and Bacon.
Motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading?
Second.
It's been made and seconded to receive the committee report to adopt it and to pass its first reading, under discussion, Counsel McGee.
Yeah, this is overtime that they need at the War Memorial for all the janitorial work that goes on over there, short staff. Unfortunately, no one is here, I don't know if they received notice or not, but having looked at prior years, this is kind of standard as to what happens during the winter hours over in that area, so, and when they have events and stuff, so. We've seen this before.
Yeah, may I, thank you.
Any thoughts, Counsel Bacon?
I could have brought this question up in committee, but I didn't at the time. When there's outside events that come in, do they pay for the extra janitorial, or does the city pick that up?
No, I think the events are paid for, they have to pay for that cost, but other activity, like, you know, snow removal, or just the general stuff, or what happens over there.
If it's an outside event, then they pick up the cost. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor of adoption of the committee report, a no vote is to deny it.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the transfer request of 3,500 for the War Memorial. Item 4E, the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order that in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the City Council hereby accepts the provisions of the Estate Planning Outreach Grant, authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of said grant. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted, Counsel McGee, Tallman, Leahy, and Bacon.
Make a motion, receive, adopt, pass first reading?
Second.
It's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report and to pass its first reading, under discussion, Counsel McGee.
As we all know, any grant that comes in, especially I think it's over $100, we have to take it up. This is a big grant, $350. But no, it's really Andrew Smith is trying to be proactive in the sense of trying to reach out to people at large plots of land for conservation purposes and do estate plan as to what their rights are, what they can and cannot do, and educate them, and he gave us an example of one property, I won't mention names of owners, what happened to them, and if they only knew what the options were. So, he went out, it's a grant, there's no match. With the 350, he's just going to, you know, rent a pavilion or somewhere out in West Hoyok to then send out notices and invites to people, landowners, to come and listen to a speaker slash attorney. He did find one, didn't recognize the name, but they will try and educate the people as to what they can do with their land for estate plan purposes. So, 350, no match to the city, he's just trying to get out there and educate people, family trusts and all that stuff.
Very good, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, is there any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor of accepting the provisions of the Estate Planning Outreach Grant, a no vote is to deny it.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan? Greeney?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the Estate Planning Grant. Item number 4F, Committee on Finance to whom was referred a financial transfer request in the amount of $150,000 from free cash to overtime, this is for the Hoyok Police Department, have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted, Counselors McGee, Tallman, and Bacon.
Make a motion, receive, adopt, pass first reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive the committee report and to pass the first reading, under discussion, Counsel McGee.
Yes, this is, as we know, the police overtime, when it first came to us, it was a request of 200,000, that has since been brought back, and now the new request for was for 150. Manny Feebo came in to speak on behalf of the police department, do I call him chief? Chief, Feebo? Honestly, the reason I like to call him chief is, we drilled him with questions and we got answers. Not saying the other chief didn't, but this was straight out answers in a sense of why less than 50, what cuts have you made? You said you were going to do it, want to hear them. And, you know, day shift, reshifting as to if they're short on captains or anything, how to reshift that and not hire. Traffic units back into, back into the mix, community policing brought back in a little bit, supervisors shifting those around so that they're not overtime allotments, and they went over the details as to how those shifts were done, and a couple other shift changes. So, what we saw was, they're trying to address the overtime accounts, 50,000, good amount, but we're going to keep picking on them. But at least what we're seeing is an action to try and help address the budget problems. So, they brought back to 200,000, and now we're at the 150. The reason it's on for tonight is, they're at zero in their overtime account. So, we need to act on this tonight, if we don't pass anything, they'll have their issues, but just understand that the account is at zero.
Okay, any other discussion?
Quickly?
Oh, Counsel Graner?
Most of these issues are contractual issues anyways, aren't they? So, these issues would have to be addressed at the bargaining table if they were to change, correct?
Well, to a certain extent, many, much of overtime is also discretionary. They have a number of important initiatives that they believe are helping to do a number of things, and we tend to concur with that view. And so, they spend a considerable amount of overtime, some of it from city side, others is from grants that they get to spend, so. It's not all contractually obligated, but.
Okay.
Yeah. Counsel Bacon?
Maybe Chairman McGee could share with the council what the status for the year-to-date is in the budget compared to last year?
Yeah, we did receive a breakdown from Mr. Feebo, and I don't, yeah, that's in front of me, it was, they actually projected, one, due to the budget increases, due to the salary increases, cost of living increases, that added 101,464 to their budget. But if you look at last year, it was 12,334, and this year it's going to be 12,305 for the budget. So, they're under what we request in a sense of everyone being at cost and not increasing to the budget. There was a spreadsheet that he did give us, I don't have it here, I was looking for it, I do apologize, but I can get that to you.
Yes, I believe they're still under that threshold, so that is much appreciated by those of us that have been advocating for level funding. Any other questions, thoughts? Okay, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved?
Pass the second reading?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any other discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor of the $150,000 overtime appropriation, a no vote is to deny it.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Abstain.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Thirteen yeas and one abstain.
By your vote, you have approved the 150,000 overtime dollars for the Hoyok Police. Next item up is item 4G. Thank you. Item marked 4G is a report from the Committee on Finance to whom was referred a financial transfer request in the amount of 134,896. This is to make a transfer from free cash to sick leave buyback. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted, Counselors McGee, Tallman, and Bacon.
Make a motion, receive, adopt, pass first reading?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report and to pass the first reading, under discussion, Counsel McGee.
Simple, two people retired that they didn't project would. They try and do the best they can on seeing who would retire, so they can allocate for that in the budget. Two people decided that, at the time they were asked, they weren't going to retire, and now they are, so this is a contractual right in the sense of paying their sick leave and vacation buyback, so this is for two people who retired.
And this is in Hoyok Police Department, again, just so we're all clear on that. Any other questions? All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Pass the second reading?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, is there any discussion? Oh, Counsel Graner?
Once again, this is part of the contractual agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
This is their entitled leave under the contract for these people that have retired, they've accrued this sick leave, and they're entitled to it under their contract. Counsel Bresnahan?
Mr. President, just remind me, is that contract, is it a one-for-one buyback? She said I could vote on this, Todd.
Up to a certain level of number of days, yes it is. Yeah. Any, any other thoughts, questions? Okay, hearing none, the clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor of approving 134,896 from free cash to police sick leave buyback.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
You missed me.
I missed you, sorry.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you have approved the sick leave buyback for the Hoyok Police Department. Item, oh, no problem. Item number 4H, report from the Committee on Finance to whom was referred a financial transfer request in the amount of $20,000 from free cash to motor vehicle repairs. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted, Counselors McGee, Tallman, and Bacon, and this is also for the police department.
Make a motion, receive, adopt, pass first reading?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report and to pass its first reading, under discussion, Counsel McGee.
Yeah, as I've been arguing for the last few years, we need to get our vehicles up to where they should be and not old and decrepit, which is where our police force is. We only gave them three new cars last year, and the report prior to that was they're two years old or older. And the way they do their blocking of cars is in three different ways, but the ones that are out there 24/7, they're aged. The 20,000 is needed to steal parts from other cars, to put in cars, to keep them running. As they said, they need new cars, this is just a patch.
Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, thank you, I can vote on this. One of the things I've been advocating for is not no longer going with cars, but going with SUVs. There's more room in for the officers, and there's more room in the backseat for potentially the criminals as well. However, you know, with the weather conditions that we have and where these vehicles go, you know, they need four-wheel drive. So, I think in the future, when we're talking about getting vehicles, I think they should be focusing on SUVs, thank you.
Any other thoughts, discussion, Counsel Tallman?
Yeah, that's, we have a police force that it goes out every day, day in and day out, and protects us, and they need the equipment, the right equipment, safe equipment, and unfortunately, we don't have the vehicles, the new vehicles, we have to take care of the ones that are out there, so this is a very vital monetary sort of plug to keep these vehicles running and keep our officers safe.
Anyone else? All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll, a yes vote is in favor of granting the $20,000 free cash transfer request for the Hoyok Police Department to move it to their motor vehicle repair line. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you have approved the $20,000 transfer. Counsel McGee, it might be appropriate to do 4I, J, and K as a package.
I was, I was waiting for you on time. Take suspended rules, take up 4I, J, and K as a package?
Second.
Sure, I will need a third signature on the committee jacket.
Did I miss, sir?
You're there, Counsel Tallman is there, so I need either Leahy or Bacon or both to sign the committee jacket.
They're all grants, there's no match.
Okay.
I would say, I would say you should stay out of this. Simply because the money can't get allocated. Nope. This is the, this is the, yeah, was the numbers exchanged? This is four, I guess you have three. Yeah, I think what it is, they added.
Yes, no, Counsel Leahy?
No.
No. Counsel Leahy will be abstaining from any vote or participation in these three matters. Counsel LeBron Martinez?
I guess I have to do a disclaimer, I spoke to our lawyer, and I was told that I can vote on it. Career point also is a subcontract to vote for these grants, so I don't know if I should just abstain the vote?
Well, generally, I believe if there's an appearance of a conflict, the rule is you have to file a disclosure form as opposed to a verbal disclosure, I believe that's the law, but that's up to you. We each regulate our own behavior. So, if you want to vote, you can vote, if you don't want to vote, you don't have to vote, so. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to take the three items as a package?
I just, they did that.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to take up items 4I, J, and K as a package, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? Let me just go through these real quickly. The Committee on Finance to whom is referred an order that in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, the City Council hereby accepts the provisions of the Shannon Community Safety Initiative Grant and authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of said grant. Recommend that that order be adopted. Item four J is that the Committee on Finance to whom is referred an order that in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, the City Council hereby accepts the provisions of the Safe and Successful Youth Initiative Grant and authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with said grant. Item four K, the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order that in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, the City Council hereby accepts the provisions of the Sustained Traffic Enforcement Program Grant and authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of that said grant. The Committee has considered all three of these items and recommended that all three be adopted. And this comes to us from Councillors McGee, Tomlin, and Vacan.
Make a motion, receive, adopt, pass first reading?
Okay, motion's been made at second to receive and adopt, uh, all three and to pass the first reading on all three. Under discussion, Councillor McGee.
Yeah, real quick, there's no match to the city on any of these grants. The Shannon Grant's a reoccurring grant. We, we've seen it before. Unfortunately, this year it's seven percent down, uh, from last year. We're getting four hundred and seventy-nine thousand five ninety-four. But the way that works is we accept the grant in the Police Department, then it gets allocated out to other areas like the Boys and Girls Coves, Sheriff's Department, so on and so forth. So what the Police Department actually gets is about a hundred and one thousand of that four hundred thousand. They're going to use it for gang suppression, uh, the mobile community policing unit, and then the bike patrols that we always like to see out there. So it adds up to the hundred and one thousand. So Shannon Grant, like I said, we always see it. The Safe and Successful Youthful Grant, um, this one's a little different. It's a million-dollar grant that comes in through the Police Department, but really, the vast majority gets allocated out, once again, Boys and Girls Coves, Sheriff's Department, everything else, to help, uh, youth at risk. Really, the Police Department gets fifty thousand in order to, like a management fee in order to manage the money for those departments. So it, in essence, so accept the grant, it comes through us and allocate out to them. So our, our take is fifty thousand, help pay for an employee. The other one, the last one, which is the traffic grant, we did see this last year. It was for roughly a hundred and fifty thousand. We got it in two installments. This year, we're only going to get seventy-five thousand. And what it represents is they're going to attack the, uh, ten highest intersections that are at risk for speeding and everything else. They didn't tell us where, so I can't let the public know that. No, just kidding. So seventy-five thousand to allow units to go up there and do, uh, traffic patterns, stops, uh, ticketing, and so forth.
Very good. Any other thought? Councillor Greeney?
Yeah, uh, Councillor McGee, is there any rationale for the reduction of seventy-five thousand?
Just the way the grant came in, state. So I saw a decrease, also, Mr. Greeney, with the Shannon Grant, which was about seven percent from last year. So, there are some cutbacks with regards to grants.
And no rationale came with those cutbacks?
They, they apply for what's out there.
Anything else? Any other thoughts, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So moved?
Pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion's been made at second to pass the second reading. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting all three committee reports and approving all three of these grants and accepting the provisions of them, uh, as articulated by the chairman. A no vote is to deny all three. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Abstaining on four I and four J. And yes on four K. It is a package.
It's a package, so it's abstain on all or none. Okay, very good, she's abstaining.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnehen?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Twelve yeas and two abstains.
Very good. By your vote, you have approved the provisions of those three grants. And that takes care of all the Finance Committee reports. Do we want to, uh, because I believe we have a quick, uh, discussion on the DGNR committee report. Uh, Mr. Chairman, did you want to just?
You make a motion to, uh, suspend the rules and take up the item number, is it?
Second.
Four? Seven A?
Seven A.
Seven A.
Seven A.
Thank you. Motion's been made at second to suspend the rules to now go to item seven A. A report from the DGNR Committee. This is to whom is referred a special permit application for a bed and breakfast by Mr. Jesus Candelario at eleven oh nine Dwight Street. The Committee having considered it, um, there were no signatures on the committee jacket and therefore, under the rule, it wouldn't be coming to us this evening and staying in committee. Did you want to just expand on anything with that, Mr. Chairman, or?
Uh, sure. Uh, I'm just, I'm at a loss here. I, I know everybody's working real hard on this and I, I got communications from the Building Commissioner, Mr. President, that he said he... Let's see here. The owner's been contact, uh, he said he went to do the inspection, but I don't have the results there. I don't have the results of the inspection. So, he, but he did go on to say that he had no objection to the issuance of a special permit. He said, he said, but I don't have the results of the inspection, Mr. President. So, I, I, I believe, and it was my, so just to make it clear, the ordinance says, uh, an inspection has to happen.
Correct.
And be completed before a special permit's issued.
Now, that's in the ordinance.
That is in the ordinance. However, I, I think it's been the practice of this body to do it pending, um, to pending the issuance of a special permit. It's been the practice, uh, thereof. But, um, it's, it's my opinion, and it's my opinion that, and it's just me, that I, I didn't feel comfortable without the Building Commissioner signing off on it, uh, to, to issue a special permit. So if other members of the committee want to sign the jacket, they, they can sign the jacket and we'll, and we'll go forward with this. We'll go forward with the vote. I, I just didn't feel comfortable.
Or we could take it up next Tuesday.
We, we can't take it?
Plan B.
We can't take it up next, next Tuesday?
No.
No.
So I'm, I'm just doing this as a professional courtesy. As a general rule, there really is nothing in front of us because we have no committee report. But I just wanted to, it was on, I was asked to put it on the special agenda. It's there. However, the Committee has not taken final action, therefore, it is no longer before us. But I just wanted you to clarify why it's not. We're waiting for an inspection. That could happen next week.
Okay, so I hope I clarified it, so, okay.
Yeah, I think crystal clear. Yep, great. So that takes care of item seven A. And we are now back to...
Mr. President?
Yes, Councillor?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Has this all be, has this all been communicated clearly to Mr. Candelario? Because I, I really do think that, I mean, we, we need to make sure that he has all this information in terms of why this is not happening, what's the delay, what, you know?
Yep.
I mean, I...
Hopefully, I don't know if he's here or he's listening, but...
I can see that, I would completely understand his level of frustration at this point. So I'm just trying to make sure that we have covered all our bases.
Right. I'm, uh, Councillor Barley, I don't know, do you want to weigh in on that statement? Is the Commissioner, I would assume, is in communication with the applicant?
There, there's no question, the Commissioner's been in communication with the applicant. There's no question about that.
Very good.
The last, and, do you want me to end it there?
Uh, I think that sums it up.
Okay, okay.
That was her question, was, has everything been articulated to the gentleman? And there is a communication between the Building Commissioner and him. Okay, very good. So we're off to item two, uh, which is our last item on the agenda. We have a special public comment period, um, for candidates for the City Council at large vacancy. We have ten people who have signed up to state that they would like to be candidates for the office of the vacancy of City Councilor-at-Large, as we know, which was recently vacated by Councillor Shatnuff. I am... We have a portion, three minutes, for each of them to state why they should be appointed. I am going to have them come up kindly and give us why they should be appointed.
Mr. President, could we, we got a list. I have nine people on my list, I don't have a tenth.
Sure. Um, okay, I'll be happy to go through the list then, okay. First speaking will be Jordan, and this is totally in the order that they signed up. Jordan Lemire, Anthony Keane, Adrian Dolan, Jerry Hobert, Diestado Lopez, James Brunalt, Darlene Elias, Mimi Panich, John Willihen, Juan Anderson Burgos.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So, without further ado, Jordan Lemire. Uh, just make sure the microphone's on, Jordan, welcome. Oh, yes, and please, uh, Jordan Hales from forty-eight Meadowview Road. Hoyoke, welcome, Jordan.
And I don't, uh, there it is. My name's Jordan Lemire. I'm hoping you all received my cover letter and resume. As you know, I ran for the, uh, seat in November, unsuccessful, but, uh, basically, I still want the seat. I'm a thirty-one-year-old, or thirty-one-year-retired firefighter. So my, uh, public service to the city of Hoyoke is unquestionable. I love this city. I see this city coming out and growing by leaps and bounds, and I want to be part of it. I know that the city of Worcester has just released a twenty-year revitalization plan. I have not looked at it yet, but I'm planning to because I believe somehow we can also bring that to Hoyoke and, uh, continue with the redevelopment that's been going on. Uh, also, I've coached youth sports in Hoyoke. I am the present swim coach of the, uh, Hoyoke High School varsity swim team. The schools, unfortunately, are still under state control. I'd love to see Hoyoke and we, we've got to get that back. So that's also a priority. Unquestionably, I want to work this, I want this seat. And, uh, I won't take up the whole three minutes, but I ask for consideration of your votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan, very much. Our next, uh, candidate is Anthony Keane of fourteen Queen Street. Anthony, a former colleague of ours.
Thank you. It's, uh, nice to be back here. Anthony Kane, uh, here today to ask for your vote, um, for the at-large City Council seat. You should, uh, take some, uh... I appreciate your time and the opportunity to speak. And I'm fortunate that we're here tonight under these circumstances in which an esteemed colleague of yours had to step down under the circumstances in which she did. I wish Jennifer nothing but the best as she moves forward in her career. I sit, I stand here today asking you to put me back on the Hoyoke City Council only for the remainder of Jennifer's term. I do not intend to run for the at-large position should I be placed in her seat today. I will represent Jennifer's interests and the voters' interests on this board. I sat next to many of you for four years. And many of you know me to be a seeker of fact, a follower of logic, a person of my word, and one who puts the city's interests before my own. I am not someone who kowtows to others or panders for votes. I understand the hundreds of, I understand that hundreds of calls have probably, probably been made trying to garner support for this position. And I understand why. It's an important position. Perhaps promises were made. I have not and will not operate that way. It's not how I acted before when I served on this body. And it's not how I would do it this time. I legislate, I legislate from a foundation of trust and integrity. I'm here to ask for your vote tonight in front of you all. Not on the phone, not in secret. I'm neither here to make friends nor enemies. My role, my job, is to look out for the city's interests. I believe, I believe this is a professional body and each member is deserving of respect. I want to elevate, not deflate, the conversation. God bless, Tom Brady. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Last of Jane's man votes.
Our next speaker is Adrian Dolan of twenty-two Keyfav. Adrian, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Adrian Dolan, uh, twenty-two Keyfav. I am a former Conservation Commissioner and Chair of the Committee that worked on a redevelopment plan for the Mount Tomko plant. And I urge you, councilors, next week to pick a new colleague who will bring a skill set and a set of backgrounds and experience that you don't already have sitting around the you here in the chambers. Last year, I also ran for, uh, one of the at-large seats. And the best decision I made was to go around the city knocking on doors, talking to as many people as I could. And the reason that was such a good choice is because it exposed me to a wider variety of viewpoints and perspectives than, than I could have gained through my normal social and professional circles. It, it introduced me to people I never would have met. And that reminded me of how valuable having a variety of perspectives is to a community or to a body such as yours, a decision-making team, which you are. As a City Councilor, as a colleague of yours, I would bring that same approach to being a City Councilor. I would listen to as many people as I could. I would learn from, from you all and from the people following. In fact, as you know, I've talked with most of you before, whether it's about, uh, sustainability initiatives in the city, running for City Council, uh, the Mount Tomko plant. And I would continue that approach. I would also bring a perspective, uh, in terms of being a representative of a younger generation. This city badly needs an economic new identity. And for that to happen, we are going to need to be able to both retain and attract people in their twenties and thirties. Unfortunately, there aren't that many people like me who got an education and chose to come back to Hoyoke to spend their time here and to stay dedicated to this community. And that's what I'm here to do. I have a, a degree in political science, so I have the education to be able to handle the, the actual lawmaking that you guys do and, and managing of budgets. I'm an entrepreneur, so I would bring that desire to create a healthy, robust business community in the city, which we so badly need. We need to be creating opportunity. We need to be encouraging entrepreneurship within, from within this community. And we need to be bringing new business in as well. And I will be a voice of the next generation that we need to make Hoyoke an attractive place for. I hope that you decide that that's the kind of colleague that you want to have completing the circle and bringing a different perspective than, than you already have. I'm not the only qualified person who has submitted his or her candidacy tonight. But I hope you'll choose me because I bring a very different perspective to, to the job. And I would be very grateful for your consideration. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Adrian. We appreciate that. Next up is Jerry Hobert of forty-seven Pension Road. Jerry, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Jerry Hobert, and I'm a candidate for the opening on the City Council. I'd like to begin by thanking all of you for the opportunity to speak here this evening. And I'm simply going to, uh, review my qualifications, which I think are substantial, and talk a little bit about what the vision I have, uh, for Hoyoke, which is very similar to Adrian's. First of all, as most of you probably know, I'm a lifelong guy, Hoyoke guy. Born and raised here, educated here, graduated Holy Cross College, always lived here, never wanted to go anywhere else. I've owned and helped develop property in this town. I've had two or three houses. And I was a partner in a development over on Hammond Street called the Manning Place Townhouse Condos that ironically, which nicely were named after my mother, who grew up around the corner. I've taught here, I've coached here, and I currently volunteer for the South Hoyoke Safe Neighborhood Initiative that's led by the guy that I call the great Eddie Case. I know Hoyoke, I know its people, from the flats to West Hoyoke. I understand their needs, I understand their concerns. First and foremost, the gangs, the guns, and the drugs, they're out. They got to go. All right? I applaud the Hoyoke Police Department for their efforts. I see them when I'm downtown working, at the Boys Club or at South Hoyoke, I see these guys. All right? They're helping, they really are, helping to keep our streets safe. And, you know, public safety's number one. If people don't feel relaxed coming into town, going downtown, traveling around town, we're not going to, we're not going to come back. And I think we are. Okay? If selected, my goal will be simple. Improve the quality of life for Hoyoke and all its citizens. Uptown, downtown, West Hoyoke, the flats, Springdale, the Highlands, uh, up there on Route Five, there, my old neighborhood. Anyways, uh, I pledge dedication, I really do. Energy, enthusiasm, and we will, we'll work tirelessly, tirelessly to achieve that end. I really, really believe, and I can sense it, that Hoyoke has turned the corner and is on the rebound. And as Adrian said, I'd like to be part of it. Okay? The, this city's a melting pot. And I feel if we really work together, and I mean really work together, it can once again be known as the jewel of Western Mass. In the late eighteen hundreds, that's what Hoyoke was known as, the jewel of Western Mass. Hoyoke's on the rise, you can feel it, you can sense it. And I respectfully ask for your support. I'm ready to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jerry. We appreciate you. We appreciate you coming in. Our next up is another one of our former colleagues, Diastado Lopez. Diastado, welcome.
First, thank you for having me. This is great coming back to the city council. I spent 20 years sitting here, and I just wanna go over some of my priority and some of my concern that I see the city facing. Number one, the city council on the mayor day, you need to handle the budget, because I mean, I've, that's, that's a big concern. I mean, whatever time you can dedicate to the budget, and if I'm elected, that will be my, that will be part of my, my time. Because, I mean, the city can now run, I mean, almost $40,000 free cash. That's, that's not easy. I mean, that's, that's a tough one. So I think that the budget will be my priority. The second one will be listening to the, to the residents, working with the resident, holding meetings, making sure that we target some of the issues that we, that we're dealing, the needle exchange, the CPA. So I'm ready to go. I've been doing my homework. I think I'm a, I was a city councillor that would, that did my homework before coming to, to the chamber, and I will continue doing that, representing the people of this city. I will, I will be also an independent voice. I, I think that the city council that, that were here with me, they know that I'm, I will, I will be very independent, and you're not gonna be able to buy me, or nobody will be able to buy me. I will vote for the resident of this city, and that will be clear from day one. And the last thing I, I just wanna share with you is that we need to market the city a little bit more, just to see if we can get new businesses into the city, because that's the only way that this city is gonna move forward. And, and we're doing a little bit better, but we need to get more taxes in. You can now depend on the resident. I mean, 10,000 people paying taxes from residential or multifamily home, it's not gonna do it. So we need to dial birds and come back with some type of more money for the city. So I'm hoping that you will consider myself for the city council at large seat, and thank you for serving the city.
Okay. Thank you very much, Diastado. Good to see you again. Councillor, excuse me, next speaker up is gonna be James Brunalt of 49 St. James Avenue. James, welcome.
Thank you. So first, I'd like to say, as, as other people have, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and to put forward why I am unequivocally seeking your support for the appointment to the open seat at large. When I ran in the fall as a candidate for the last general election, starting from zero and never having run before for any elected position, I was able to receive nearly 3,000 votes and was happy to finish, well, not happy, but I was pleased to have finished less than 2%, sort of out of the running, so to speak. And I was also pleased that I received a very uniform citywide support, carrying less than, varying less than one or one and a half percent from any ward to another ward in the city. And, and I recap that simply as a prelude, since now I have a public opportunity to say what I've said to many people already, thank you Hoyoke for your support. I appreciate it. That being said, I am a lifelong Hoyoker. I'm a graduate of Hoyoke High and an alumnus of Hoyoke Community College. I am currently serving as an unpaid commissioner for the Geriatric Authority, and in fact, I will be in court this Thursday, again, with the Division of Unemployment Assistance, continuing to try and resolve ongoing authority issues, as we've been doing for the last couple of years. For the past 13 years, my wife Jennifer and I have been homeowners and property taxpayers in Hoyoke, and prior to that, we rented, so I feel that I have the perspective of both an owner and a renter of property in the city. There are some people who have opined or believe that the person who receives this seat should be somebody who lives in downtown Hoyoke. I don't live in downtown Hoyoke, but I do work every day in downtown Hoyoke. For the last six years, I have worked for the Mass Rehab Commission here on High Street. For nine years prior to that, I worked for the Western Mass Training Consortium, also on High Street. I worked for West Mass Elder Care, located in the old Parsons Papers Building down on the First Canal. And even back in high school, I worked for four years for Hoyoke Sporting Goods, when it was still down on Suffolk Street. Thank you, Uncle Ernie. I, I think what is important is that a, a city, a councillor at large must have a view for serving the whole city, and I do. Employment and job opportunity is probably the most, or one of the most critical issues facing Hoyoke, and as a vocational rehabilitation councillor, this is literally what I do all day, every day. I work with businesses, I work with business owners, I work with the school system, I work with the Chamber of Commerce, I work with training programs like Hoyoke Works and Providence Ministries, I work with the New Spark Initiative. But most importantly, I work with people. I work with job hunters every day from all over the city, people who are looking for jobs, and my job is to help them get a job. Politics, of course, can sometimes be a strange business, and people can get tagged or labeled or maybe fit into little boxes. So I just wanted to conclude by telling you a couple of things about myself that you may not know. For many years, my wife Jennifer and I have been involved in the peacemaking movement with the Sisters of St. Joseph's and Pax Christi, and most recently, we've become involved with the Citizens for Nonviolence and participated in their latest walk for nonviolence in Indian Orchard in Springfield. I'm a 20-year member of the Massachusetts Alliance of People for Personal Action, a statewide group dedicated to the full societal inclusion of all people, despite race, despite gender, despite disability status, or any other issue. And I'm proud that I have again been invited by the Shriver Institute in Boston to give a week-long training on this topic to human service workers, and this will happen next month in May. I'm also involved in the Western Mass Training Group, a Hoyoke-based group with the same mission. I look on this appointment and this opportunity with the council as another opportunity to serve, to serve individuals and to serve Hoyoke, and I ask for your support on May 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. We appreciate you applying. The next speaker is Darlene Elias of 17 Clark Street. Welcome, Darlene.
Good evening, city councillors. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before you tonight, considering the circumstances. I'm sure this is not easy for you, having to be put in that position of replacing an esteemed colleague, so I thank you for that opportunity. Today, I'm gonna take a little different approach. I'm not gonna stand before you and kind of glorify what my qualifications are. Okay? I'm not gonna do that. I send you a resume for that reason, and I hope that you defer to that as far as some of my competencies and what my skills are. What I'm gonna do right now is take a little different approach to this, okay? I wanna share with you a little bit what my vision is, or what I envision city council does. So we know that the function of city council is to work on city goals, such as major projects of infrastructure improvements, from community growth to land use to finances and strategic planning. And it is our city charter that serves as a driving document of what city council does. In other words, at-large city council members do the very best to represent constituents only after they have seen to the needs of the city as a whole. But I would say that it goes a little bit more than that, right? I would argue, as someone who'd like to come in as a city councillor, that the role of city council is also to use assets and resources in a manner that promotes healthy communities and improves the quality of life. Good community development is action that helps people to recognize and develop their ability and potential to organize themselves, to respond to problems and needs they share. And that's where I wanna focus on right now. To ensure a healthy community, a thriving community, a strong community, at-large members must serve the same constituency, and we're talking about the same constituency, which is the entire population of Hoyoke, not just the wards they live in. And as a Latina, as a homeowner, as a long-term resident, as a mother, as a grandmother, as someone who's educated here all her life, who's lived here for 40 years, I understand, not only as a resident, but as a city councillor coming in, what those needs are, because I have the same needs, right? I think it's really important as a city councillor to be able to and willing to cross boundaries, right? To kind of go beyond their comfort zone and to begin to entertain the needs of the city as a whole. And the reason why I am different as a candidate is because I am a Latina, I'm bilingual, I'm bicultural, I have competencies, social work competencies, I'm educated, and I have the ability to bridge those gaps in a very nonpartisan way. And so I ask for your assistance, or I ask for your vote when it comes to May 3rd, because we need to ensure that we are going to be together, working collectively as a strong Hoyoke. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darlene. Appreciate it. Our next candidate is Mimi Panich of 134 Madison Avenue. Mimi, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do wanna start out by expressing my unhappiness at the fact that we're even here tonight. The circumstances are extremely unfortunate. I'm sorry to be standing here before you tonight. I'm sorry that the position is thus to be filled. But having said that, I'm also not going to take up your time with a quick resume. You all know me, a great many of you work with me. I'm currently the Chair of the Planning Board, and you all see my work product. Anyone who hasn't, there are endless memos. When you see our recommendations and a memo accompanies them, I've written it. So you all are very aware of the background I bring, and if there are any questions at all you have for me, I would be very happy to talk to any of you during the coming week. So with all that said, I really, you know, I think that the job of a city councillor is first and foremost to represent their constituency. And in keeping with that, I stand here tonight to represent the interests of the 3,000-plus people who voted for me in the last election. It was a recent election, you know, I know that there are questions about whether being ninth really means anything, but when you look at the structure of our city council and the way we vote for it, I think there is in fact a compelling case, and it is a nonpartisan case. But what we do, you know, there's no magic number, there is no magic rank. You know, we have a list of people, you know, we had a big field, and it's very exciting in Hoyoke that so many qualified people were willing to serve. But we come in, we have a rank at the end of the day, and we go down and fill the seats available according to where the voters put you. And in the past, we've always filled vacancies, you know, with one tragic exception that I could find, according to that principle. We have X seats, we go down the list. If a vacancy opens up, that's how we fill it. And that's important because as both, you know, President Jordaine and several other councillors, including Councillor Vacan, who I work closely with on the Planning Board, have said, you know, the city council's authority is really derived from the fact that we're elected or you're elected directly by the voters. That's who you're responsible for. It's not the same as an appointed position. And you all certainly have the power under the charter to take another approach to filling this seat, but I would suggest to you that it is a power that ought not be exercised except for the most serious and compelling of reasons, because it does disenfranchise voters. And direct election, councillors who are responsible to the voters because the voters put them there are the foundation of our democracy and our system. And as I say, I'm speaking, I think, on behalf of the people who voted for me. A surprising number of them have come forward and asked me to make this case to you tonight, and, you know, I hope you will consider it when you make your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mimi. We appreciate you applying. Our next speaker is John Willahen of 19 McClellan Drive. Jay, welcome.
Thank you very much. I have over 25 years of municipal experience. For the last 18 years, I've served, I've served as the Chief Assessor, Chief Assessor for the town of Belcher Town. Many of the items that have come before this board over the last year, I have a direct work and knowledge of and experience. Number one, the CPA surcharge, we had that in Belcher Town. It's a 1.5% surcharge, and the valuations and the exemptions come right from my office. Secondly, the TIF programs, which are the tax breaks for business expansions, again, the valuations and the exemptions come right from my office. I have personally negotiated two pilot programs for solar fields for my town. Those are netted over, or basically close to $1 million in revenue for the community for the next 20 years. There's a third pilot program that it kind of needs to be approved next month at town meeting. If that's approved, that's gonna net, again, another $1.7 million in revenue for the community. If you wanna talk about municipal finance, levy limits, levy ceilings, new growth, you can ask me any question, okay? I'm sure I'd have the answer for you. My office has produced over, on average, $275,000 in new growth over the last eight years, okay? This community is up against our levy ceiling, and the ability to raise new growth, new funds, new revenue has been hampered, okay? And I simply feel my experience will be an asset to this board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. And I should note, Jay is also a former colleague of ours on this body. And our last candidate is Juan Anderson Burgos of 236 Locust Tree. Welcome, Juan.
Thank you all for the opportunity. Last fall, when I ran to represent Ward 6, what I experienced was profound. As I introduced myself to the people of my community, I was also introduced to the great needs and concerns of the people of Ward 6. There are the needs and concerns of people all over the city. It was difficult to hear some of the concerns they faced, but also gratifying to be someone who was truly there to listen and with compassion and respect. That quality is one of the main strengths I gained from my education in communications at HCC and UMass Amherst. I heard them tell me about the concerns that they have trying to make homes for themselves and their families. I can relate a lot to the, of these needs of the people in the city. I have experience helping people navigate important financial decisions through my role at a bank. I can relate with some of the toughest struggles people are facing. I have experience facing my own demons, rising up from them, and I am proud to say I have been sober for almost 15 years. I experienced feeling violated when my house was broken into a couple of years ago, and I understand that challenge, what a challenge that is to come back from that. That also gave me a broader understanding of the addiction issue in our community. I have experience trying to pursue passions while facing the reality of the day-to-day needs of life. The people of Hoyoke have had their struggles and setbacks, and they all want the opportunity to face their future with hope, ambition, and a shared sense of purpose. I understand that we don't get anywhere by sitting on our petty quarrels rather than looking at the big picture. At the end of the day, this job is about the people you serve. It should also be about making sure our government reflects the community it serves. To the members of the city council, we may not always agree, but I have respect for you, or anyone that puts themselves out there to serve their community. I ask that you support me, and let me be a voice for the city and the people I have learned to love. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Juan. We appreciate it. That concludes the list of candidates that we had, that had applied. I would like to make one overall commentary, and that is that I'm very impressed by the breadth of the candidates that have applied, all, every single one of them, all distinguished in their own right. And I think it's a real compliment to the institution that we have so many candidates that have sought to apply to be on, in, a member of this institution. I think it's a real compliment to the city council and the great work that we're doing here and the impact. I believe that we're a collective positive force for good in the community, and I think it's a real compliment to, to us. I would also be remiss if I could not also echo the comments made by a number of the speakers, that it's most unfortunate that we have to have this vote, that Councillor Shatinoff, who was duly elected by, you know, a majority of the residents of the city in this election, felt compelled that she could no longer serve on this body in a way that was consistent with her values, that was no longer consistent with being able to live in peace and to be able to be with her family in peace. I think that's really sad that it has come to this, and it's gonna take us quite a while to really reflect on all of that. And where are we at politically in this city that that is where the state of affairs of, of Hoyoke politics is? So hopefully some good will come of this. And whoever is selected on May 3rd, I would encourage all councillors to continue, and all candidates, to continue to have a dialogue with all of the 10 candidates who have come forward, and we look forward to a vote on May 3rd. I felt it was important as president that I did what I could to expedite this process so that we could be at, if you will, a full-size city council of 15 members, not to delay this process. I think we've had an ample opportunity for everyone who wishes to step forward. Again, I'm very impressed by the number of candidates who have come forward, and now we can begin that final deliberation process and begin to take a vote at our next meeting on May 3rd. on May 3rd. And I would, again, just remind folks, in terms of the process, it will be comparable to what you saw earlier this evening for auditor. The person who receives eight votes will be elected to fill out the remainder of councillor Shatinoff's term, which is about, well, until January of 2018. Is there any questions, any of my colleagues, at this point? Councilor McGivern.
Real quick, Mr. Chairman, I think the silence of the city council says that we accepted the format and the process that was presented to us. My only question is a fairness one, is that all candidates were aware of tonight? There is one other name, which I'll mention publicly, but later, if that person was not aware of it, you know, just want to make sure.
Yes, and I want to compliment, you know, the newspaper did a pretty good job about letting folks know about this, and we did advertise to give people an opportunity for this meeting. But yes, it should be noted that councillors do not have to vote technically for any of these 10. They could vote for any person that meets the criteria in the city that they wish to vote for. So to your point, councillor McGivern, they could vote for an 11th or conceivably more candidates. So without further ado, I believe that concludes our business for this special meeting. A motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? Opposed? We stand adjourned.
Please. Sit down and step up.
These chairs, they need to change. How long have I been sitting here?
Yes, we need something that's suitable for a three-hour meeting.